I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order, May 7th, 2018. I hope this call or roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Labutus.
President.
Mr. Lang.
Here.
Mr. Marmee.
President.
Mr. Rath.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
And Mr. Fennel.
Here.
We have all here, all present this evening. Next on the agenda, we have the invocation by Mr. Blake, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you please rise.
You bow your heads. Father God, we thank you for all that is good and the gifts that have given. We praise you for guiding us to be kind, respectful, and your servant. Lord, guide our community tomorrow as friends and neighbors will be deciding school issues and constitutional amendments, and guide us as we do best for this community. We humble ourselves before you. We thank you for your love. Amen.
Please drop me in the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, you can start it now. All right, we'll get a next one, too. Next, we have caucus. That's anything pertaining to council schedule tonight. We do have Rule 11, possibility. 18-42 is a resolution authorizing directing the director of public service to participate in the ODOT winter contract for salt. If it's okay with Mr. Cost and Mr. Marmee, we'll discuss that in miscellaneous. Do we have anything else for caucus? Next, we have the minutes of our April 16th, 2018 meetings. Are motion to approve those?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rath.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. All of them in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. That passes. Thank you. Next, we have two reports of standing committees this evening. We have one from finance and one from service. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under communications, we have one, actually, we have two tonight. One from the Ohio Division of Electric Control, a new application for Pint Master's Friendly Barbecue at 1081 North 21st Street. And we also have a letter from a resident from Green Bay, Wisconsin. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments this evening. One is now and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. If you'd like to be heard, please raise your hand, and I'll have you come up. Mr. Butcher.
My name is Admiral Comrade Wayne Butcher. There's one thing I'd like to comment tonight. As the streets around here, especially Union, that still, when I tell them I eat the street paved, and there's a narrow street right next door to Union, it's in bad shape and it's potholes, and there's quite a narrow street that you'd be paved. And there last night, I was in the front porch, there were a couple of vehicles were not pulled for emergency vehicles. And I'd like to know what the city's going to be doing about that. That passed.
Thank you, William. Do we have anyone else for this first section? Just come up and give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Fred Martin. I live at 427 Glen Eagles in Newark, Ohio. And I wanted to talk about an ordinance that's going into place or we're looking at called 1834, which is the removal of the lift station in Glen Eagles Estate and the tie-in to the city sewer system. I'm in favor of this thing. The neighborhood's in favor of it. We've gone through the regular process, and now this is in front of y'all. I believe it's first reading tonight on this subject. It's of importance to Fairway Estates from a safety perspective, a cost perspective, and an environmental perspective. The safety perspective, 11 years ago, we had a water backup, sewage backup into homes that caused a lot of damage and safety issues with raw sewage into people's homes. A cost perspective for us as a community, this lift station we've been responsible for, and over the past seven years, we've spent in excess of $35,000 to maintain this system. So it needs to go away for that reason, too. And then the third reason is an environmental one. The cost of powering this pump and this lift station has gone up astronomically or doubled over the last couple of years. So that's obviously causing some problems there. There's also an advantage to the Horns Hill residents. That advantage is as, you know, that area becomes more residential and less country. The septic systems are becoming antiquated. The EPA is putting more and more regulations in place on these septic systems, and they have really no solution right now to get off of those septic systems. This project would give them an avenue to get off of that. And the final is, you know, with all the growth that's going on out there and all the improvements that are going into the business out there, the golf course and stuff, this just helps the growth maintain in that area. So for those reasons, we're very positive about this moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred. Yes, it is on the first reading tonight unless somebody waves that, it'll be voted on in two weeks. Okay, let's move on to ordinances on the first reading, 18-10.
Ordinance 18-10 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Frazier, and ordinance amending Chapter 618 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Newark, Ohio with regards to city-owned or operated dog parks.
18-10 will be held for two weeks for our second reading. Next, we have 18-11.
Ordinance 18-11 by Mr. Labutus, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Frazier, and ordinance amending the position classification and position authorization tables of the City of Newark Division of Engineering by creating the position of engineering/zoning administrative assistant and setting compensation therefore and abolishing one secretary, one position.
18-11, where is it?
Mr. Bub.
I will ask that we waive the two-day reading rule on 18-11.
Mr. Bub asked that we waive the two-day reading rule. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Mr. Bub.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Engineer Brian Moorhead has asked that we waive the two-day reading rule. We have a retirement that's going to be occurring soon in June, and he would like to get that new person in place as the current person in that position has many years of knowledge and a broad understanding, and he would like her to be able to help pass some of that on while she's still here. So therefore, I would ask the council members to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Honored, please call the roll. Waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennel.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule's been waived, Mr. Bub.
Mr. President, I'll move that we adopt ordinance 18-11.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bub, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any other discussion on? All right, and I've written over that. 18-11. See none, opt, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennel.
Yes.
18-11 passes 10-0. Next, we'll read the resolutions on the second reading, 18-26.
Resolution 18-26 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Cost, Mr. Fennel, Mr. Frazier, and Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to apply for funding from the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance under the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Program.
You've heard your second reading of 18-26. What does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee. Making motion to adopt resolution 18-26.
Motion by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 18-26? See none, opt, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennel.
Yes.
18-26 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 18-28.
Resolution 18-28 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Labutus. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Governor's Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 2018 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant Funding.
You've heard your second reading of 18-28. What does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee. Making motion to adopt resolution 18-28.
Motion by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-28? See none, opt, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennel.
Yes.
18-28 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 18-29.
Resolution 18-29 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Frazier, and Mr. Labutus. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the 2018 Transportation Alternatives Program to partially fund two future projects.
You've heard your second reading of 18-29. What does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath. Making motion to adopt 18-29.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 18-29? See none, opt, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennel.
Yes.
18-29 passes 10-0. Finally, we have 18-30.
Resolution 18-30 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Frazier. It's a prelim, oh, excuse me, preliminary legislation cooperating with ODOT for the replacement of Cherry Valley Road Bridge within the City of Newark.
You've heard your second reading of 18-30. What does you wish?
Mr. Rath. Like to make a motion to adopt 18-30.
Motion by Mr. Rath.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-30? See none, opt, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennel.
Yes.
18-30 passes 10-0. Next, we move on to resolutions on the first reading, 18-31.
Resolution 18-31 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-31.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
I'm making motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution 18-31.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier and Mr. Marmee.
We have some expenses that need to be expedited, payouts, and also bills.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Honored, please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennel.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule's been waived on 18-31. Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Making motion to adopt resolution 18-31.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any other discussion on 18-31? See none, opt, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
And Mr. Fennel.
Yes.
18-31 passes 10-0. Next, on the first reading, we have 18-32.
Resolution 18-32 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-32 will be held for two weeks for our second reading. Next, we have 18-33.
Resolution 18-33 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-33 will also be held for two weeks for our second reading. And finally tonight, we have 18-34.
Resolution 18-34 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus. A resolution declaring the necessity of improving properties in and abutting Fairway Estates subdivision and along Horns Hill Road by upgrading the existing sanitary sewer system and installing a new gravity sewer system and the necessary maintenance.
18-34 will be held for two weeks for our second reading. And that concludes our legislation this evening. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, this is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anybody? If you please raise your hand. Mr. Butcher.
I'm Comrade Wayne Butcher, 263 East Street. I'd like to know when the city of Newark is going to be doing more resourcing of streets, especially my street, Union, and I'd like to see that done this summer. And my afternoon forecast must clear tonight, low in the mid-40s, high tomorrow, near 77, windy, high in the mid-upper 80s. My next, since the ring, I'll talk about that in my next afternoon forecast.
Thank you, William. So I can cut the grass tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, good deal. I need to. Daniel. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay. Mr. Crawford.
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. I'll be as brief as I can. I plan on speaking tonight on at least a few things. I won't be here next time we meet because my daughter will be at a talent show that night, so I won't be, I'll be there supporting her, obviously. Tonight is a very, I guess you could say, somber night for me, only because six years ago tonight was on a Monday, and my mom passed away that night. And everyone, of course, who's followed me or has known me a while, knows that a big part of why I'm involved in politics is inspired by her, obviously. My children are inspiration to me as well. But growing up, you know, with my mom, who was a single mother, I saw her reach out to people she barely even knew half the time. We took people into our house all the time who, you know, she's a soul, they had a need, and she had a very big heart. Sometimes people took advantage of her, like they often do with those who have a lot of compassion. But she never, you know, took the time to sit and think, well, should I? No, it was just, if they have a need, if I can provide, I'll do my best for them. And that's a big part of why I am as passionate about certain things that I am is when she passed away, I didn't realize that night that the night before was going to be my last night I ever saw her alive. And the reason why was because the night that she passed away, I had to work on a homework assignment because I was going through college because I wanted to be involved in politics. And when I finished that assignment, the moment I finished it, within, say, probably a few, couple of minutes, I got a phone call telling me that she had, she had passed. So obviously, it took the wind out of me. I just decided at that moment I was going to devote the rest of my studies and then, of course, my political endeavors to her memory, at the very least. So one thing you can always expect from me is for me to try and be as honest with you and also as civil as I possibly can. It's one of the worst things about, you know, how our politics, almost at every level, has devolved these days, is the lack of civility. And not to mention some patterns that I noticed, and I think everyone notices over time, whereas everyone obviously knows, right, it's down the whole gazebo thing. I've stated that quite clearly in the past. But I'm concerned, as she would have been if she were here, with a pattern of what may or may not be gentrification. Pattern where certain group of citizens get pushed off into the periphery as we focus on maybe the interests of a select few, I don't know. But what I do know is that it is my hope and my enduring mission to make sure that all voices are heard. You know, if this is truly a government for all of us and not just a few, then it makes sense, in my opinion, that we would avoid any further discussion of closing off the pedestrian bridge. I understand the concerns of the church that, you know, where there is that interest to do so, but it seems like they've taken on a number of security measures on their own, and I think that's a responsible thing to do. But being someone who's used that bridge, you know, when I didn't have a car, and knowing a few people who live in that area who don't have a car, there are some serious safety issues to consider if you have to choose the Mount Vernon Road Bridge as opposed to that. And I'm more than happy to demonstrate in any way I can why there are serious safety issues, especially if you're pushing, you know, a stroller or something across that bridge compared to the pedestrian bridge. It's, you know, you're kind of dodging traffic at certain times during the day. Also, for government of the many as opposed to the few, it's kind of discombobulating to consider why we no longer have, you know, benches and stuff around the square. I remember growing up, I mean, the gazebo is one thing, that's a symbol to me, but it's another thing when it seems like the downtown area may or may not be less welcoming to just the average citizen to come down there. Could be wrong, but there was a time when you could go down there and sit down at one of the tables around the square and just enjoy a meal with your family. And it seems like we get further and further away from this community that was welcoming to all, and it's at least the impression that we are left with. I mean, there's been times, unfortunately, the mayor's, I don't see him here, when we've talked about, you know, bragging about job creation and stuff. And I'm all for jobs being created, but the value of those jobs have to have meaning, too, whether you can actually raise a family with those jobs. And if we're just creating any jobs just for the sake of satisfying statistics that we can brag about, then, you know, who's that really serving? All of us or the few? These are questions that we need to ask ourselves. And I, once again, I stem this back to my mom's example because she always considered what was in the best interest of everyone around her, not just our small little household. And this, we were not, never a family of great means. So an interesting thing, we've been having these transportation discussions, obviously, I'm part of the Transport Lincoln County group and one of the committees that we formed, and there's a lot of hope going on there. We're generating some interesting discussions, and I have a lot of hope that we're actually going to do something. But this is another one of those things where it's like, we need to remember that we have to deal with this transportation issue because, you know, if you don't have transportation, then you can't have this, if you don't have reliable transportation, you can't have a reasonable expectation to climb out of poverty or to get ahead. It's kind of a chicken and egg thing, you know? Some people say, well, if you want to get a better job, get a car. Well, if you don't have a better job to begin with, you're going to have a hard time getting a car. My brother is one key example of that, and the interesting thing I want to bring up is that our most recent meeting was on my mom's birthday. So, you know, this has been a very, you know, heartfelt year for me because a number of things keep happening in line with the stuff that reminds me of my mom. But, I mean, my mom, I used to have to take her to the doctors. My brother, he would get a better paying job than what he has right now if he had transportation. I have to take him there. It's just, I say all this because I just want us to remember that there's more to everything that we discuss than what the few people who come to these rooms and the few people who run businesses and whatever coroner there is of this city. And I don't suspect that people in this room only care about a handful. I just want us as a community to remember these things. So with that, in the interest of not being verbose and talking on and on for hours, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Sorry to hear about your mom, that's a nice story. What's your daughter's talent, by the way?
Singing.
Oh, very nice. Good luck. Okay. Anyone else? Next, we have miscellaneous, which is time for the administration and council to speak. Do we have any one from the administration? Director Ma.
I have two things. Please keep the family of Kelly Nor, who was the director of Lincoln County probation for several years, in your thoughts and prayers. He passed unexpectedly Saturday night. That's going to be hard on his family also. We retired a police supervisor, Scott Snow, last week. This morning, we promoted Travis Delancy in his place, but I don't often do this, but Scott Snow spent a lot of time in the Detective Bureau, and he was an investigator that was second to none. His experience was sought after by other surrounding agencies and even agencies that were out of state, asked him to come in and review cold cases and actually more than one that he'd ended up solving for them. We were lucky to have his public service for the years that we had him, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. Anyone else from the administration? Honored, Mr. Johnson.
I'll pass, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Honored, Director Sassen.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the same lines as Daniel's comment, and on a much lighter note, I thought I'd offer a little historical anecdote. Today, if she was still alive, would have been my mother's 90th birthday. Tomorrow is the 73rd anniversary of VE Day and also, not coincidentally, Harry Truman's birthday. The war in Europe actually ended on May 7th, but the federal government decided that they would claim May 8th to be VE Day as a tribute to the sitting president, Mr. Truman. My mother, then 17 years old at the time, was very upset by that, and she never got over. So my only point being that when you make decisions that seem like no brainers, always So, my only point being that when you make decisions that seem like no brainers, always remember that there's somebody out there that's going to be offended and they won't forget.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Mr. Frager?
That's a tough one to follow up. That's a good history last night. Uh, no, I won't pass though. I want to encourage everybody to go out and vote tomorrow, especially on the Newark High School renewal and for your local candidates of preference. And really, having these awful elections where there's not a presidential candidate, typically a low voter turnout, so your vote really does go a long way, and your participation really does matter. Fred, thank you for coming, sharing your views on Fairway Estates. William, I'm glad that you came up and gave the weather report because I was really concerned, so thank you for that. Daniel, my sympathies on your mother. When it comes to the gentrification in our community, it, of course, is a concern with me. There are some checks already in place, having a low income tax rate of 1.75%, low water rates, low property tax rates, low cost of living when it comes to housing. We do have some level of transportation. It's not the best that we can, but there is some workarounds in place, especially with ride sharing and the collective community that we have, where family members often step up to fill the gaps that we have. And also, the overall quality of life that we continue to see improving, especially with the revitalization of our parks and the continued investment of our government. Some other housekeeping items that we have, on May 10th, the HHCA is doing their monthly meeting. It's going to be at the Buckeye Winery. They're also going to do a $5 tour of the Louis Sullivan Building. That's a $5 donation to the building with a $100 match from the HHCA to encourage their revitalization efforts. May 12th is the HHCA yard sale as well as the plant sale for the master gardeners. I'd also like to call an economic development committee. I know we didn't get to that today because of the schedule, but we're looking forward to an update from the Economic Development Department. I would also like to thank the Parks and Rec Department for their participation and the HHCA cleanup of the historical Hudson District and assisting with trash bags and some garbage pickup as well. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Frazier. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, I will pass.
Ms. Hall?
Mr. Labutus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few things to say. I would first like to thank Mr. Joe Ball from Property Maintenance Department. There was one of the community block watches in the fourth ward that had some concerns about some of the properties in the area. He was able to attend that block watch meeting and explain kind of the process, things he can do and things he can't do from his office, so I appreciate him being there, and he was able to address their concerns very eloquently and give them the information that they needed. Secondly, I wanted to thank Domestic Relations Court Magistrate Deborah Lang and Judge Duke Frost. Last week, they had a Law Day event at the courthouse. It was fantastic. Quite a turnout, a lot of different people speaking and a lot of different families there, as well as wanted to congratulate them on that, on a great event. Also, the National Day of Prayer was last week, those that could take part of that last Thursday on the front steps of the City Hall. And then, last but not least, today, May 7th, is my wife Hope's birthday, so I'd like to wish her a happy birthday. With that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus. That's a good job. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, so I would like to thank everyone who came out for Law Day. As Mr. Labutus mentioned, it was my wife who was one of the organizers. Would also like to thank Mr. Frazier and Mr. Labutus for joining me to speak about the job of city council and the legislative process. It was a really interesting day, well-attended. Hope folks can make it next year. I also, I recently enjoyed the discussion we had, it was hosted by Our Voice Ohio, on the opioid or the addiction crisis and how it's being reported, and it was a really great opportunity, I think, for the whole community to kind of come together. I certainly met a lot of different folks, you know, from different walks of life. Along those lines, I want to remind everyone that Sam Quinones is speaking tomorrow at Newark High School. I think that's at 6 o'clock, and the tickets are free, but you need to go online and get those. I think there's an event on Facebook you can get. But I had the pleasure of listening to Sam speak today at the Ohio Bar Association, and his book, Dreamland, if you haven't read it, is kind of the quintessential book on the crisis, and it's really a fascinating read. I really recommend. It's a really easy read, too. It's a, it's a lot of fun. Well, not all of fun, but it's interesting. And I hope I'm not spoiling his speech, but one of the things he said today that really, really stuck with me, said that, you know, the antidote to heroin is not meloxone, it's community. And I think that's really important, that we all keep that in mind as we think about what's going on and we attend these different meetings and we try to pull people together, that really us coming together as a community is what is going to solve that issue. So, you know, it's an important message. I just really highly recommend everyone go and attend tomorrow night, and, but that will pass.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to call a finance committee meeting to order, or not to order. I want to call a finance committee meeting. And then, second, I want to go ahead and invoke Rule 11 and bring Resolution eighteen dash forty-two to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. I'll have you read eighteen dash forty-two, please.
Resolution eighteen dash forty-two by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rapp, Mr. Labutus. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to participate in the ODOT winter contract for roads sulk and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of eighteen dash forty-two. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
I want to waive the two-day reading rule on Resolution eighteen dash forty-two.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, waive the two-day reading.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. ODOT releases this event in which we can participate in. They literally gave us the email, sent us the email, not in time for us to get it on to this agenda because they just announced when it happens, and we don't have time if we wait until the next one, so we have to expedite this in order to meet the deadline to get a better deal on our salt for our roads and the winter.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. I'll have you please call a roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mr. Fennel?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule is waived. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt Resolution eighteen dash forty-two.
Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any other discussion on eighteen dash forty-two? See none opt-ins, call a roll?
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennel?
Yes.
Eighteen dash forty-two passes ten zero. Thank you, Mr. Marmy and Mr. Cost for bringing it up forward. Mr. Ma.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Daniel, I do appreciate your story about your mother and everything, and I've lost both my parents, so I know how you feel. As far as the gentrification of the issue on the footbridge, I don't see it as that issue. Not only that, it's kind of funny that you say you don't want anybody else to bring it up again, but then you bring it up and you discuss your points. The whole thing is, is that we cannot ignore any kind of a safety issue that is happening within the city of Newark. There have still been two incidences since everything has been put in place as far as the safety on the side of the bridge where the school is. However, it's not only about the safety of that side of the bridge, it's also about the safety of citizens on the other side of the bridge, too, because if it continues to attract negative activity, we want to make sure we protect both sides of that bridge, not just the one. And I agree with you with all the other comments that we need to make sure that we look at all the other safety issues if people could not use it. But the main thing is, is that we need to still discuss it because we know there's a safety concern in that area. It doesn't mean that we're going to close the bridge, but we have to make sure that we're still addressing safety concerns, no matter where it is or no matter what part of the city is, and it has nothing to do with gentrification. And that should never be the issue brought forward from this point on. It is a matter of a safety issue. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Mr. Rapp?
Thank you. I'll call a service committee meeting for the 21st. Also, I want to talk about a program that's coming up on Thursday, May 17th, that's a week from this Thursday. There's a comedy event going on at 31 West called Raise the Wolf. No, I'm not speaking with a list, but it actually is Raise the Wolf. It's a comedy event put on by the police department to raise money for the canine, the next canine dogs that they're going to be buying. Tickets are $20 a piece. I've got two tickets here that I bought, but you can see Officer Shaw in the back of the room, and he's got more tickets for anybody else that's interested in participating in that. And these guys have put on a lot of fundraisers, they're doing an awful lot of work to raise enough money to do this, so my hat goes out, and they certainly are putting in forth the effort. I want to encourage everybody to vote tomorrow. I know Mr. Frazier mentioned there's a Newark High School levy, also many of the voters in the third ward will be voting on the Granville High School levy. That'll be interesting to see how that pans out. Hopefully, they'll support that. And with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilman Fennel, actually.